Call this session back or something. All right, and we have the we come to sales services of age thirty seven. The sale of services is the revenues that we generate from. They mean. Thirty seven. So piece thirty seven listed the revenues from the sale of services that we collect through rental lease. User fees from the rec center campground fees. These were plots and burials at the cemetery fuel sealed sales at the airport collections of permits, basically anything. That is not property tax or water or sewer or that sort of stuff. And I guess my question is that last year we generated. Nine hundred eight hundred seventy four thousand in 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 revenues. And for twenty twenty three, we're projecting that we're actually like quite significantly less at seven hundred fifty six thousand. And I guess I'm wondering why we are so cautious with with. And why do we disagree that one is less than last year?
For the chair, so sale of services is one where. Particularly when I'm working on the budget, I don't look at just one year. There was so many things happening last year. Or, yeah, it is last year now. Sorry, you know, Covid's ending and people are getting out more and. It's it's really hard to judge just on one year. So with sale of services, I usually do a five year average and then maybe increase it a little bit. Which is what I based twenty three's budget on is not just twenty two, but past years as well.
But we also raised fees.
Correct, but that wasn't before we did the budget.
Okay, yeah, that then I'm I understand the the approach to a five year average. But in a growing community. With more people taking advantage of the facilities that we offer, well, that's campground direct center or 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 air or airport. I feel that, you know, if you go back five years, you're at a very different level than than current, what the current demand is for those services. So I guess I I just find that, you know, one hundred twenty five thousand or one hundred twenty thousand dollars less in revenues. I mean, it's nice when it's more in twenty twenty three, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to. Be overly cautious with these with these expectations and revenues if that means that we're going to have to tax our. Or our tax payer more as a result of that. How the rest of council feels about that.
And one thing to mention, thank you, Kevin, is that these haven't actually raised yet. And it's had two readings of the bylaw, so it's gonna be. On.
You're in April.
Yeah. But before they do raise.
But they have raised or they've been increasing over the last five years.
Some. Some haven't been visited in since two thousand and four.
Any other note? Okay. Uh, let me go and do. One last question I had was there is in this budget, there is a lot of transfers from reserve, including. Transfers from stabilization reserve from a Covid. That thing that. That basically help us. Balance points and particularly with the stabilization reserve where we're adding to reserve one hundred thousand, we're subtracting one hundred twenty eight. Right, so we're drawing down that reserve. That is a choice that is a, you know, a a a thing. You know, we can add to the reserve and build reserve up or we can drain it empty, but that that is a choice that we have. I guess my question was like, well, you know, if you were to take away all of those. Choices to say, okay, we're gonna add a whole bit like we just did with it like thousand. What would the deficit look like if we, I think we did that, so what? Were were you still on surplus or prepared?
So I'm sorry if we didn't fund the reserves or we didn't use the reserves.
Use the discretionary reserves where where we're not we don't not from up from creative reserves or but more from. Yeah, the reserves that are like that. And that was a stabilization reserve.
So if we didn't use the stabilization reserve. We would be the, that's too funny. It would actually be at a zero budget, like a total zero budget, but. I didn't think that would ever happen, but it did. But the general fund would be in a deficit of fifty seven thousand dollars. The water fund would only have a surplus of twenty thousand and we would need to. Increase taxes by at least another two and a half percent to have a balanced budget. So we'd have to be at nine point four percent if we were not using the stabilization reserve.
So we're mess in. Because we can endlessly draw down on civilization reserve more than we're contributing. Right, because I mean, at some point, it's gonna be empty, right? So at some point, that two and a half percent is.
Yes, I understand exactly what you're saying, yes. And the stabilization reserve, though, is. The reason that it was established and the reason it's supposed to be used is for one time things. That if we didn't use the stabilization reserve, we'd have taxes go ten percent, three percent, seven percent. They'd be all over the map, so it's designed to to help. The the impact to to taxpayers.
Because I mean, ultimately, we're spending it all five thousand dollars for an E S S room next year, we're not going to spend five thousand dollars on the E S S room, we're versed at five thousand dollars on. Something else, right? So these, even though that they're one time thing, that we have an endless list of these one time things. So I'm not sure how that helps us stabilize. But in one way or another.
For the most part.
It's not like we all of a sudden have a one million dollar emergency that we're now using for civilization, which I could completely understand, right? I mean, if you had an emergency, then we we should have something that, you know, that. Supports our financials so that we don't have to go into an emergency meeting and say, we need to collect. More taxes or or. And so I understand those one time urgency things, but five thousand dollars for, I'm just painting up. I'm sorry, because the only one I remember. Because I think it is, it is. I know. Don't you bring up with five thousand, like. The office. But whatever, but I mean, those are not real emergencies that were, I mean, they're just little projects that.
Yes, but they're also projects that we couldn't use our reserve funds for because they're not capital. So we either have to use taxes. Or the stabilization reserve.
Yeah, well, I mean, it comes out.
It does, but it's coming out of past taxes.
We're adding current tax, so like I said, it's it's we're adding a hundred thousand, we're taking out a hundred twenty eight thousand.
This is.
This year, right? A considerable amount to the market budget, I'm sure, impacted by inflation. Oh, so this is that stabilization to counteract that inflationary pressure, not just the budget pressure. But the inflationary pressure on our on going operating costs, so inflation goes down. It gets breathing room again, what we can do for moderate tax increase and start funding of best stabilization. But the inflation not make like, we're not gonna deflation so that costs are. Less less increase, but not. But we are also gonna have non market growth as the community grows, as new residents move here, especially against by problems like down the main street and so forth, that's the new sources of tax revenue. Without putting this in the system. Essentially, what you're saying that we have two and a half percent of tax increase that we're avoiding by drawing down our reserves.
If correct, if we weren't using the stabilization reserve, we'd have to increase our taxes by another two and a half percent.
Still, you're certain, still present, okay? And on that note. Is there is there any other question or or topics that you want to discuss in the budgets before we sort of come down to. Like little things, they are humble.
Through the chair, on this lovely project list that I love. Fourth from the bottom in the first part, project listing with the funding, it says Kesh Kaboo's restoration, two hundred and forty one thousand. Now, one hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred comes out grants, which we already have. But the seventy eight thousand, three hundred, I mean, what are we doing to this caboose? But it's costing us two hundred and forty thousand, and is that something that seventy eight thousand, something that we can do?
Even as part of the grant application, we had to match certain of funding.
Yes.
Obviously, in that still, that whole project cost was the application, so that it was costed out, what kind of repairs to be done. This was a sad state and through. Heritage B C, it was a great, it's about restoration of this part of that original. But yeah, they 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 aren't able to pin down, but they they took it and that. We can see it, so it's good that the grants they can do and savers and decent building group line. To be safely to or through it. It's definitely a long. Space for. Sessionary. So mean attraction.
It'd be an attraction.
Circuit expenses.
That were the next month.
Just on the on on this. Of the process to get this project, because this was started a while ago. Was there, like, was there? A super prior council, was this brought to prior council for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, it was, and I I remember that getting the million dollars and we were all excited and blah, 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 and just, you know. Seventy eight thousand dollars, you know, see it like this, it's it's harsh, having said that, the Mesley chair left. Because we didn't get that hundred thousand dollar grant, I'm presuming that the twenty five thousand, two hundred and sixty three will be taken out.
Correct.
Does that make it another percent or is that just?
No, because it's coming from research.
I'm trying to find, you know.
Any other questions? That could trust it for one hundred, but still miss. Okay, then we sort of come towards the end of this discussion where we made a few changes that all along and. And then there is one last discussion left, which is like, well, where do we stand? With a with our budget and what is the surplus that's currently. A result of the choices that we have, including the proposed tax increase and where do we want to save?
So let's start with, and this is all in what you buy. So the budget currently is six point nine percent tax increase. And comparing it, I I went on all the like my finance forums and I went through the civic info and. Everything I could find to find other communities either closed or approved already tax increases. Of what I could find, the average tax increase, there's twelve communities that I was able to find. The average tax increase this year is just about seven percent. The lowest being in the city of Kimberley at four percent and the highest in Vancouver at nine point seven, which I know we're not Vancouver. And there were a couple of others that we excluded from this, which was Lake Country. They had a seventeen point two, I think, percent tax increase. And then on the flip side, the District of Houston was able to keep it at two point five. However, they just lost their their mill. And so they've lost bazillions of jobs and you can kind of see where that's coming. So so anyways, as I said, of the twelve that I was able to find fourteen that I was able to find excluding those, the average increase six point nine six percent. And for the District of Lilowet, each one percent change in the tax grid. Is approximately twenty two thousand, six hundred and sixty eight dollars in revenue, so if it goes, if you go one percent down, we lose about twenty three thousand dollars. If you go one percent up, we get about twenty three thousand. And from that twenty three thousand. One percent is about thirteen dollars for the average single family residential poverty. And it's about thirty seven dollars for the average business. So that together sixty dollars brings the district twenty three thousand dollars in revenue.
Okay, I think they used it, gives an update, where where the surplus service currently sits.
So the only direction that I've gotten so far is to remove twenty thousand from the transfer to reserves. And to the recreation reserve, so currently, I mean, a big page there, just add twenty thousand to it.
You're at three ninety six, three hundred ninety six thousand dollars of surplus.
Of that, one hundred and twenty thousand, five ninety four in general, seventy seven, seven sixty one in water. And one ninety seven, six fifty two beneath the ocean. Why does that matter? Because none of those can be below zero individually. No, because water pays for water, sewer pays for sewer, general is everything else. So each of those numbers has to be above zero.
The mayor.
So I believe that, through the chair, I believe that our water, sewer and garbage are mandated. By cost of living increases.
Through the chair, the the bylaw does, yes, it's inflation on the water, sewer and garbage.
Is there a chance that we could? I mean, we have it to our bylaw, but I'm just trying to find a way that we could shave it off without maybe not taking away from the services. But what we're hoping if we were to adjust that bylaw.
And well, we wouldn't really have time right now, but they'll go out in a week or two.
Okay, because they're earlier than the actual tax.
Yes, utilities go out by late March and taxes go out by late week.
And we're we're right now, we're. Tax increase now is going to be six point seven percent percent.
No, taxes at six point nine.
Okay.
Unless council tells me different, the tax increase is at six point nine.
We we've taken off hundred and ten thousand dollars. Out of the budget. The budget was based on six point nine percent. And every twenty two thousand is one percent. Correct?
So council has directed me to reduce the transfer to the recreation reserve by twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
That is the only direction that I've gotten from council.
We've taken off. On that first page, we made adjustments. Well, there's there's rec center salaries adjusting for a hiring date. And I don't know exactly what to do, so reduce swims funding to on a number, I'm not sure what that was, but. So those are the delta that that we made onto the budget that was previously presented with a six point nine percent tax increase. So those are, those are on top of the twenty thousand, those are the deltas, correct?
Yes.
Great, so. I begin. So the the change compared to the February sixteenth. Is. Ninety three thousand. And we would reduce the budget, we reduce the deficit with ninety three thousand, correct? And twenty two thousand is one percent. Should be other than three or four percent.
So first, only look at general. Because that's the only place that tax impacts. So forget water and sewer.
Oh, yeah. Those are services, thinking of this like B C hydro. Many communities will build monthly or buying. Just happened to do and. Sure. This entire, we're generating, but like, but then I don't understand why we're like, we're generating two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of surplus on water and sewer. To fund those.
But that does not, none of your property. Only to water, sewer.
Right, so we have a surplus in general of a hundred thousand dollars, right, and we added.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yes.
Okay, but compared to the February sixteenth. Budget, the deltas are, we were at. I guess we're confused.
So.
Like, I was.
And I, I think I know where you're going with me. Are is what you're asking me, what percent the tax increase would be now? After all these changes to be back to what we were on February sixteen? Okay.
You should have a whole.
So. Changing the property tax increase from six point nine percent. To four point five percent. Then general surplus would be sixty six thousand, which is pretty darn close to what we were before.
Four point five.
However, that was not a direction from council for me to do that.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be young. No, I don't know, but we're discussing that.
Yes, but that's why that six point nine hadn't changed.
No, no, don't worry, no. It it is it fully clear now that, you know, the February sixteenth came back and you made some, you made a few deltas, which is great in response to some good questions. So. And. But I understand is that if you look at the, in general, if you look at the surplus budget is. In in the initial budget from February sixteenth, it was a surplus of sixty five thousand. Okay, sixty five thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars was surplus as presented on very sixteen, based on a six point nine percent tax increase. We've made some changes, including. A H P agreement that led to higher recreation salaries and wages. We've we amended wages for positions that are currently vacant and may not be filled before May first. And we've done something with swims, we resulted in now, and then we did twenty thousand that we have taken from. The contribution to the recreation fund and then put it into our general operating fund. So that leaves us with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in surplus, if we want to back that back up to sixty five thousand. Then we can do that by raising tax four and a half percent. At that same time, though, we have another Q B, it's gonna go and then we've got this out staff. Correct, we better be careful, we don't cut ourselves too short, okay? So is it, is it stop and say yes, is in the budget already?
I have made my best guess.
Okay.
Um, but as we learned with the rec center, I was less than, it was more than I expected, so. So yes, there is increases in this budget right now, but they're just guessing.
Go to the place.
No, I was just gonna say so next year's budget should hopefully be a little easier because we're not doing contract negotiations, yes, and that's, that's. It's fixed. So that's the wild card right here.
That's where the beer. Um, in our courses we took, there was something on on what we're doing right now. I don't think we should short ourselves too much, I don't want to raise taxes, but we have to be careful. We need all of those. Consideration. Do I?
I'm just curious.
Um, I'm a little in the bunch of, I'm not really sure about the money, yes. Here, unfortunately.
Through the chair, so I don't, I don't think that we are taking too much from our reserves. Because I know that we we didn't, you know, learn that. I think that the adjusted hiring date for May first has kind of alleviated some of our pressures. Because we don't have to pay it from January to. Because we don't have to pay it from January to. Through April, so I think that's alleviated a little bit. I, I hate six point nine, I, I, I don't like four point five, but I think, but. It would, um, I would support that. Uh, and remembering that six point nine still is coming from, because we can't change that, our water sewer garbage. Going into those reserves. So I don't know, what, Joanie needs direction tonight on what to do, so I don't know. Do we, do you want us to make a proposal of four point five or is it?
That's a recent.
Um, through the chairs, um, when you're doing the negotiations, are they retro to January? Technically, yes, it's late, right, and that's then staff, you can down everything, right, so. Now. I'm kind of sitting. Yeah.
Chair. Eric. I'm looking in, in my mind, I'm looking at five point five, five point seven. Say. Keep it in the fives. It's funny. Inflation, six and me, six more seven.
Same.
Me?
You?
You're with me? Because in sales. So selling something for five hundred dollars, you sell it for four ninety nine. Know what I'm saying? Four hundred dollars. They play that game all the time. And, and we're, you know, five point five, five point seven, I don't think would make a difference, we're in the fives. I don't think we should rather the fives. And. I mean, ultimately, the, the number. Whether it's five or six, I mean, it's gonna translate into a, a, uh, a number for tax purposes that. It's completely different and, um, that I. Uh, what I, what I struggle a bit with is, is. Lacking experience, looking at a budget and then sort of seeing how that. You know, materializes into actuals, uh, we've only ever looked at a budget, or at least I have, uh. Uh, I've never seen this budget sort of come into fruition, uh, other counselors may have seen how that happens and. But I don't know exactly how much. You know, how conservative this budget is, um, but I do know that this time. Uh, we, we live in now with substantially higher inflation. There is more uncertain, there is more uncertainty in terms of, you know. There's a great guess of what things are gonna cost in May and September, but we really don't know. Uh, we used to know when inflation was two percent. But now. It's possible that, you know, these things are gonna be. Ten percent higher in September, or they could be two percent higher in September, and I think that's the uncertainty that have. Uh, that we have stabilization funds to sort of manage all that and, and, uh, but there, there is a, a bit of uncertainties. Um, the, the reassuring thing is that, you know, if we. If we're able to manage, uh, our expenses effectively is. The additional funds that, uh, that we then save can be reserved and put to use either next year or subsequent years. In order to look after our, our capital assets and, and, and other, other facilities that we, that we have, so it's not as if. They're lost. So, uh, and with that, it's, uh, but it doesn't reduce the pain. Of getting a tax bill that is, you know, five percent higher, seven percent higher, or four percent higher for, for that, so. It, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little, uh. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with Councilor McNairy that. We, there should be some caution, uh, but, uh. And, you know, we look at inflation, that, uh, the, the consumer price index for, for twenty twenty three. Was around five, five and a half. Uh, it's reflected in that. What the rate number is, I think time will all account. If someone wants to make a proposal. Make a motion. Five point seven percent.
I'll go second, Jimmy.
Uh, do you want to comment?
Third.
The sound?
Well, third.
Your third, okay, shall we take a look? Look, it all goes to theater. All right. Then, gotta be good note that, uh, Mayor, I'll pull up see where, uh, not that state, but who's there. Get some alone again, at least two more times. Yeah, and we will see a final budget.
Well, if you want to start this all over again.
We can. All right, we're coming back to our agenda. Is there anything else we would like to add at this point to our twenty twenty three budget? Or, sorry, twenty twenty three to twenty two financial plan? I, I, uh, uh, in a conversation, I, so just for council's clarity. When we approve this financial plan, it does provide the authority to the district staff to spend. Monies in twenty twenty four, until such time, a new budget has been approved by council. Um, so that means that, and I, I made a joke that we should sort of look at twenty twenty four, what's in this document? Is they may have included that private jet. Um, but, uh, um. But that plan stands until it is replaced, and so it, uh, we, we should, people would add. You know, I know that long term plan sort of seemed like a far away thing, and then the budget for twenty twenty three seems to make focus. But I do think that prior to their reading on final vote, we should take notes of what is in the twenty twenty four, twenty five, six. That increases, that's the body as well. With that. I'll move on. Do you five point five for the agenda, rise and report? Okay. You want to? Um, I was gonna ask, don't need. Sorry, board of directors, whatever it matters.
I, I think it's reasonable. And I do, I understand council's hesitance for six point nine. And. On six point nine, just so that everybody knows, that does come from somewhere. Our policy says that we will aim to raise user fees and taxes by a rate not less than inflation each year. So when I start the budget, that's where I start. And. I, I think, um. Council's put a lot of work into this and it's, uh, I know some are not happy. Um, but I, I. It's reasonable.
Thank you. Council, we.
I think it goes through the chair, through the boss, through the chair. I think it's unfortunate that we don't know. What the other divisions are going to do to us or to our constituents, that's really, it's really hard to make a decision, we need. With the unknowns out there, it's just scary.
And let's hope they'll be gentle, the most impactful usually is the school and police tax. And that's the last one we ever get, and it's usually. For second weekend, like I'm scrambling to do taxes.
Move up, five point one, rise and report. Five points one. Can I have a motion? You adjourned the meeting of the, uh, March ninth to twenty twenty three, committee of the whole, the vice of reporting.
Yes, technically, it can be the whole actually rise reports to council.
All right, can I have a motion to do that? So, we're nearing second. I think Sarah.